I'd like to call the May 19 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:03 PM. The meeting is taking place at the Board Meeting in Stanley T. Williams. Roll call?
Chairman Papa Holzer.
Here.
Vice Chair Anafrio.
Here.
Secretary Cianna. Diana Folsamo. Zachary Canada.
Here.
Kim Dawson. Here. Victoria Alonso.
Here.
For the nations who rely on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors?
Good evening. Vince Mace from Gale Drive North of Connecticut. Let me start off by saying I miss you guys.
Yes, you can.
I miss you guys. We had some great work together, some great times. I really truly miss you guys, but I decided to run for town councilman. That's where I sit now. So hello to everybody. I come here today for a purpose. In my 30 years involved in trying to do food drives, I realized that, and many food banks and food pantries tell us, that late spring, early summer are the worst months for them because they run dry. They have to replenish, and there's no way to replenish. So I had an idea, and I ran it by the town council members Tuesday night, and they said, okay, we want to work with the Board of Ed, the North Branford Food Pantry, and the superintendent, and have a one-day food drive for the North Branford students on Friday, June 10th, to bring in one non-perishable item if they can. And we would do this by, and I'm not creative, so I hope that's God and Shawna, you have talented people to do writing for the Totuckin Times and the Sound. Shawna, I didn't have your number, but I did have Marcy's number, and I called Marcy to run it by her, and she already started coming up with ideas. So I'm figuring that if we did like Jerome Harrison, they would do one group of food, like peanut butter, jelly, and things of that nature. TVES, they would do maybe breakfast foods, like boxes of cereal, pancake mix and things like that. NBIS, they would do maybe canned vegetables, corn, peas, string beans, whatever it is. Maybe the high school, they would do your pastas, your tomatoes, your tomato paste, and things of that nature. We have 1,572 students. Even if half of them respond, or their parents respond, that's at least 750 to 800 items that would go to our North Branford Food Pantry. And I think that would help them be okay during the summer months to provide for many. We don't know who they are, but many of our residents and citizens are in hard times due to the COVID-19, losing their jobs or whatever going on. So I'm asking to work with Scott, Shawna, the Board of Ed, the North Branford Food Pantry, and the students and the staff, because you guys play an important role in this year, to get the word out, however we do it, so we could have that one day, June 10th, Friday. Maybe it will be something, once a year, starting every year if this is a success, to build up the food pantry. They need it. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. When I talked to the assistant director last, they service over 200 families.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. We have 800 items or better. That would certainly go a long way during the summer months. Everybody knows during Thanksgiving and Christmas and January, you know, they do do good with turkeys, because everybody's in a giving nature. Now is the time where they really need us, because it's not a giving time, but maybe we could have the North Branford community, the school community, the students, teachers and staff, and the Board of Ed to work with us to get something going. So I'm kind of at your guys' mercy, because I'm not creative. I got the ideas, but I need the organization behind me to get it going, so we could have something successful, so the people in the North Branford that are less fortunate than us have something to look forward to.
We're on board.
Yep, we're on board.
Anybody have any questions for me?
So are you handing the ball to us now?
I can't hear you.
Are you handing the ball to us now? Pass?
Let's put it this way, here, we're going to pass back and forth, okay? However, you guys are the leaders, all right?
Got it.
It's, town council members, you know, are behind it, but you guys have the troops, you have the students, you have the teachers, the faculty.
We're the visionary, we're the executors.
Yes, yes, yes. And you know what? I know after four years I'm on this board, you could execute.
We were very successful with the Ukraine fundraiser.
Yes.
Community pulled together. This is another example, we can go local and help our townspeople. Indeed, you know the inflation, where prices are at, with shortages, with fuel. Everyone is feeling it. So we're honored, I know my administrative team will step up, will make it competitive in nature, there'll be a little prize for the winning school.
Of course, they're well.
Not food related, but we'll have fun.
I'll be in touch with Scott and North Branford Food Pantry. Shawna, I don't have your number, but I have Marcy's.
I'll find you, don't worry.
Huh?
I'll find you, don't worry.
Okay. Marcy, and congratulations to the new board members. I'm sure you'll find that, I know it had to be tough during budget season, this really was always rugged during budget season, but we got it done. And so congratulations, and thank you for volunteering to serve the community as volunteers, because a lot of people don't realize the time that you put in, it's not a paying job, the time you put in to better the community of North Branford and the students of North Branford should have, and they want to graduate, they could say they had a good education for 12 years coming through the school system. Thank you, God.
Thank you, Vince.
Thanks for coming.
See you later. Bye-bye, everybody.
You don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I can't leave yet, I have a class. I have another meeting tomorrow too.
Bye, Vince. Student representatives?
NBHS has received some initial summary data regarding the spring school SAT for the class of 2023. The total average student score was above the state average by 28 points. The total average student score was up 29 points compared to the previous school year. Both English reading and writing and math scores above state averages by double-digit margins. Percentage of students meeting benchmark significantly above state averages for English reading and writing. Percentage of students meeting benchmark at the state average for math. And the percentage of students approaching benchmark above the state average for math. And for seniors, several events are planned, including the senior prom, a senior class trip, a wellness day event with the yearbook distribution, and graduation day events such as a class breakfast, a senior slideshow, and a graduate walk-through at JHS, TVES, and NBIS.
That's great. A lot coming up.
Our advanced placement course exams provided by the college board took place throughout the month of May for the AP courses offered at NBHS. The college board releases data during July regarding student scores and average scores for AP courses. NBHS currently offers the following AP courses: Biology, Environmental Science, Calculus, Spanish, Psychology, Language and Composition, U.S. Government, Statistics, and U.S. History. For the 2022-23 school year, AP Music Theory will be running again, and AP Studio Art. In addition, NBHS offers ECE college-level courses, UConn and SCSU, Seminar in Academic Writing, American Protest, Time and Space in Literature, and Creative Writing Workshop. And then the NBHS Spring Concerts took place on May 10th and May 12th. On May 10th, the NBHS band performed, and on May 12th, the choral groups performed.
Very nice. Now, refresh my memory, where did you choose to go to McKenna?
I'm going to Worcester Polytech in Massachusetts.
That's right. And Brayden, you're at UConn?
Providence College.
You're going to PC? Nice, nice. Good luck, girls.
Well, you just stole my butter.
Sorry.
So ladies, you have been amazing. I can be more flowers. But this is just a little thank you from the board for your time, energy, and efforts for being a part of the Board of Education as student reps. So we thank you so much. This is your goodbye. We know next month you won't be here because you have graduation prior.
But you could come if you want.
This is our last meeting with our reps, and we look forward to following your future over the next four years. We know that you'll be back to visit and see the new building and be a part of that process. So you've been outstanding representatives of our school system. I've read the bios to you before, what they've done, and you can't do anymore, and they're just incredible stewards for the North Branford school system, represent so much. And your parents should be so proud, and I know they are, well done. And anything we can ever do for you, while I'm speaking on behalf of the board, please know that we're here to help you and network and reach out and support you, okay?
Thank you.
Good luck, ladies.
Thank you.
Has everyone read everything that the consent agenda contains?
I'll make a motion second to discuss. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the May 19th, 2022 Board of Education meeting.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Under resignations, is there a difference between, it says we don't have to approve the bottom two, but the first one, we even have to approve that anyway, right? Or is that just a, you read?
That, we're going to have to go into executive session for the one that's in the asterisk.
Got it. Did you see what I'm saying right?
The lead, you mean?
This one here.
Oh, no, this, well, this is included in the consent agenda. We don't have to do it separately. Right.
We wouldn't normally do this, but this is part of that.
Right, no, this is just, right. But I do want to say, I'm very sorry to see these things. Mr. Guetz? You're going to get to work with a pretty nice crew up there. We are so going to miss you. We wish you the best of luck, the best of luck. I mean, I know, I talk to Diane all the time, they're very excited to have you up there. They can't wait. And Beth Bernstein's leaving us after all these years?
Yes, she is. She's retired as well. And Dan Dahlberg, who I think has 38 years with us.
Yeah.
So we're certainly going to miss, you know, all of them. And obviously, what an opportunity for Mr. Guetz moving on to where he grew up and went to school in La Coo, and has been an incredible addition to our staff as not only an educational leader, but a role model in every hat that he wears. We never say goodbye, we just say.
I might actually cry. Like literally.
Our relationship will continue, and we never say, who knows what's going to happen down the road. So we wish him nothing but the best.
I see you had a phone call. Are you mad at me? Are you still talking to me? I said, not today, but another day I will.
Well, I just, I want to thank you, and I should share this personally with Todd and Scott, you know, we're the Atlanta North Branford, and spending time out has been the biggest blessing in my career. I came here not knowing anybody, and now I'm leaving, and it's, it was incredibly difficult to leave. But like, you know, Scott said, be able to go back. I was introduced to your staff, and walked around the school that I walked around as a middle school student. And it's such a unique, you know, opportunity, and I'm proud of what we've done here together. This place is unlike any other place, so my goal is to try to create, you know, the atmosphere that Todd's created at the high school. This is an incredible administrative team to work next to, and, you know, I would be ready for this if I didn't work, you know, with Todd and with Scott and this whole administrative team. Working with the board has just been incredible. Again, to know you, and we've done some really great things, and I'm just, I'm proud of everyone, so, you know, thank you, and, you know, thank you for your support and letting me grow, and I want to come back and see the new building, and see people here helping my life forever, so.
We wish you the best.
Yeah, you've made a tremendous impact on each kid personally. I can tell you that, truly. And I think those kids are truly blessed that you have. I'm not even a crier, which kills me, but you have touched my life and my daughter's life, and so many other kids in such a positive way, and I can only say that your shoes are very big to fill. So I hope whoever's moving into that position does understand that. All right, moving on.
Okay.
All right. Yep. Give me a second. Okay, yeah, we need a little call, I think.
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Cianna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Okay, recognition, under Exhibit B, you'll see the three students who will be representing our top three as the valedictorian, seductorian, and the essays, and obviously.
Scott, what's the essays? I mean, I know who it is, but I don't know what it is.
You know, that's a great question. I don't think it means that they're third in the class, they are third.
That's what it means?
Okay.
Yes, one, two, and three.
Got it.
So I can speak with conviction about the three of these students, and when you read their bios and what they've done and what they've been involved with, they're exceptional. So obviously Brayden was just here, and Taylor and Brayden, I had the privilege of having lunch with their families when they were recognized at the shoreline, and then I know the administrative team was with Brayden in Waterbury for our SCAS group, and these kids can compete with anyone in any school district, anywhere in the state of Connecticut, or nationally. I'll put them up against them, and that, what they've done, what they've achieved, their involvement, all National Armed Society AP classes, involvement, community service, and just being tremendous, tremendous young ladies, so proud, very proud of them. So take some time, if you get some time, just to read their bios. Communications, Exhibit C, we have the briefs from the three buildings. I'm sure you had a chance to look through those, so it's obviously, May through June is crazy time. They're just nonstop, and they're out, and the administrative team working with the students and supporting them. It's just a real energetic time of year right now.
I love seeing these pages filled up with all kinds of good stuff.
Yeah.
For a couple of years there, it was just so quiet, and I'm sure you were just trying to figure out anything to put in here. I mean, there's just all good stuff going on. Great to see the kids socializing again and having some fun at school and getting back to as normal as we can.
Under curriculum instruction, Tracy, updates or anything you want to share?
Nothing in particular. Obviously, coming up this summer, we'll have a few things to do in terms of looking at the teacher evaluation plan, asking for your approval for the next iteration of that, and reporting the student achievement as we go through. As was mentioned, the school day SAT scores are back, are showing improvement, and we hope to continue that trend with smarter balance.
Tracy, do you want to address the school ranking? Because I know that's hot on a lot of people's mind.
Sure.
Because I just thought, I saw the NIASK is in here too, and I didn't know if you wanted to kind of do that together? Because it does relate.
Sure. So there has been, from what I understand, some questions that have been sent our way in terms of some of the ratings that are produced by for-profit companies.
Well, there's also some that are not for profit, though. So let's talk about them.
Well, as not for profit, but I think that what's important to understand is that how ratings are determined really do depend on the organization which is stating those. So, right, you mentioned NIASK. So NIASK is, let's see, I think we have the New East Association of Schools and Colleges report. So this is actually exemplifies about three years of dedicated work, as well as work that's done prior to that and behind the scenes. And it is an in-depth and comprehensive review of the work of the high school and what's happening in the high school. So it determines whether or not we get accredited and colleges therefore accept our graduates. So it is probably the most important piece of paper that I hold in my hand this evening with the other two ratings, or core types of ratings, that that schools are given. I believe Scott just handed out the executive summary.
Of the NITS report?
Oh, no, no. So you did receive the summary, though, correct?
I think we did. Yeah, we did.
So I believe we mailed it to you as well as the others.
It's in our board packet.
It's here.
And it's in your packet.
So we'll talk about this just very quickly. So again, in the view of education, professional organization to the state of Connecticut, as well as national associations, NIASK really is the most important thing that we're looking at right now. And it gives us accreditation, and all the colleges accept this. So what it means is that we've been approved by them, and in your executive summary, as well as in, I think you've done forty pages or so.
Yes.
It talks about, really, you look at commendations and recommendations, there are a slew of commendations, and a relatively narrowed and targeted group of recommendations. One of the biggest things that this report lends itself to is the fact that the community came together to approve the new building. I've been here for three NIASK reports, and they're every ten years, and I will tell you that every single one of them, the building and the facilities of the high school was a main concern. So the fact that we've done that, they cited advances in curriculum in terms of having all of the curriculums available in a random form, they've talked about FLEX, our ability to intervene on students who live students on their behalf, to provide targeted instruction, as well as a few other things. So that report is, do we have it on the list?
We do, there's a hard copy at the public library, and also a hard copy, central office is a hard copy of the.
So I would be more than happy to talk about that, or people can look at their own, they can contact high school or central office, and we'd be glad to discuss this. I talked about.
Same document they have.
That's what's available at the library too. So, but I think one of the most important things I mentioned is that different organizations look at different things. So for instance, the building. So NIASK has numerous times recommended that we do something with that building, and we are. But that building has also impacted some of these other ranks. So if you look at NESH, what you see is a score that is described by the actual rating company as an above-average public school located in North Branford, Connecticut, and it goes on from there to talk about a few things like student-to-teacher ratio, as well as test scores. Now, for myself, when I look at this, this has letter grade ratings for many areas, for people that don't know this, and you're seeing it in preview. For instance, we have an A- for teachers. So we were graded by this organization as an A- for our staff. Well, it is important to know, and I'll just go over a couple of these very quickly, is that that rating comes solely from surveys that students and parents can do. So what that tells me is that it is one of the highest scores, as well as our SWORD score, and it is the one that is truly determined by the community.
So people were surveyed?
Yes, well, they were not surveyed. They went to the site and surveyed.
And clicked on it.
Oh, so they chose to do it. It wasn't sent to them, they chose to do it.
147.
So that's.
So, and some of these are based on 13 responses, but this is my point in this piece specifically, is that it is the one directly determined by surveys, meaning that when asked to rate your teachers and staff, our teachers, our students, rate them as exceptional. So I think that's one of the things. Some of the other things, like when you look at diversity, well, diversity is how they gather that information is from the National Center for Educational Statistics and from census information. So this is just what it is. So what they do is give us a rating based on a criteria they believe that diversity should be set at. So it's not.
It's out of our control, something like that.
It's not, it's not anything like, like, although they're saying we don't address diversity, it's nothing like that. This is what your diversity levels are, the composition of your population within the town, and this is what your grade is.
So Tracy, I understand NESH, but that's not the survey I was referencing.
Okay.
There was one that we were ranked 113th out of 165 schools. It was done by the U.S. News Worldwide Report, and the criteria included college readiness index rank, college curriculum breadth index rank, state assessment proficiency rank, state assessment performance rank, and graduation rate rank.
So for instance, in that report, and I don't have the whole printout of it for that, but if you look.
That's why I'm looking at my phone, I'm not being rude. I'm.
Well, no, and that's a sad one, I knew. But my question to you is, what is the graduating, the graduation rate listed there?
Ninety percent.
So that is not our graduation rate?
I didn't think so.
So all of these things they have in a piece somewhere, like where you can put down, it says, where did we get our data? That says that they get it from the U.S. Department of Education, but that's not correct.
So can you go in and pull the report like you did for NITS?
Absolutely.
And bring it back to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
So we have the NITS one, but the Consumer Ed one is the one that you want to see.
Yeah.
The rest is in the report, right?
Yeah, because it even says it's based on government data.
It is, so that's, so like, I specifically pulled that one piece out, and it said, they received that from the U.S. Department of Education, but we have never in my time here had a 90% graduation rate.
State Department of Ed sends us that number with our cohort, based on the data that's in power school, and it's SASE numbers, which follow kids for four years at any state school.
And be verified.
Well, I'm not even sure that's the killer, right? So for college readiness index, we got a 27.4 out of 100. For college readiness index, we got a 27.4 out of 100.
Right.
That's worse than the 90%.
The number of students that have taken AP courses, which again, but it looked skewed to me, because it's.
So can you get any information on this specific report?
I can.
Do you want to send it to you?
So I have a report, it's a backup that I'm trying to dive into to see exactly how they calculated their numbers. So I can absolutely do that. That was a little on-depth, but we had to ask permission to get some of the information.
Right, because we're going to go, I mean, for the AP offerings and the percentage of kids in a high school with 500 students, we're an AP-recognized school for not only our achievement on the AP, but our number of students taking multiple classes. So this is AP honor roll, right? And I didn't hang that there today. That was there. So there's multiple.
But it's all relative, and that's, that's right. So here, how the board honors us as an AP honorary, expanding opportunity and improving performance for AP students, but they're using that same data for that number in other bits, but.
So let's get, let's get that report, let's get it in this form.
And dive into it.
And bring it back, so everyone understands exactly. Like this report, this NITS report, means nothing. This is.
I didn't even see that one.
No, so if you go through this, it's 13 kids responded on a checklist. The only valuable thing in this report that I saw is under the North Branford High School reviews, there's a comment about the superintendent, and that's it. And I'll leave it at that, but other than that.
Honestly, the NESH report, to me, is more of a red herring, kind of like, not relevant, it's the other report that has me a little bit worried about.
Yeah, but the other one, I think I looked at it, and it said 90% graduation rate.
But that's not the worst part.
No, but this is the other piece that you want, information.
Yeah, 27.4 isn't great, 62% is not great, 44% is not great, 55% is not great, negative three.
I personally emailed both of these organizations.
Yeah.
One, we had to have Scott email, because they wouldn't even speak to me. They only wanted our PR rep or our superintendent.
Who's our PR rep?
I guess Scott.
It's the back part of my hat.
So that's what they do, and then US News didn't even get that NIASK, which is why I don't have as much information.
No, this is state, it's from a national organization, they drilled it down.
But so the comparison is not on a national level, or is that on a state?
It's on a state, we're 113th in our state. It does give a national ranking, too. Actually, we fared better nationally than we did in our state.
Well, percentile-wise.
Percentile-wise, yeah.
So they have not responded to our inquiry, like I said. The others, I just had to have Scott send an email, and then he allowed me to use his access, but US News has not yet, so.
But I mean, we should be able to see things like our test scores, and they should line up, like we should know that.
Yes, we have.
There's certain things that we could compare, they should be within a percentage.
They are, it's a composite score, so you have to look at the pieces, and the pieces aren't transparent.
And sometimes percentages don't tell the whole picture. For instance, in week, in the year for our AP courses, we got to about 33% of the kids taking an AP course throughout their four years at the high school. So 33%.
I think that's good.
I think that's high.
That's 30 of the kids. So when you say 33%, it sounds like, oh my God, it's terrible. But when you look in the context of 33%, 130 of the kids.
Yeah, that looks, yeah, that does.
So you have to put it in context.
And I think that's important to kind of drill down on, because, in other words, people are going to say to the board, why are we 113th? are going to say to the board, why are we 113th? And we need the data behind it to say, well, if you look at this category, look at it from this way. If you look at this category, these are the pros, these are the cons. And you know, it's always nice to say, well, this is where we really can do better because, you know, we're falling a little short because we're not perfect and we want to keep evolving. But I only can read what's in there and I know what I'm told in the meeting, so I just want to make sure that I have the correct information and the rest of us do, and that way we could kind of drill down on it. And that's only for high schools. It's not for our spectrum of schools.
And this is, this is the, for U.S. News, it's the first year of change calculations. So all of their calculations prior to this were done differently than this year. This year is a calculator system, so, which is why I'm not as familiar with it as we were some of the others. There were changes in this year's ranking because of COVID. They actually skewed it because of COVID-19.
All right. And it's funny because we were one of the schools...
So we'll dive into, we'll dive into that report with...
Absolutely.
The 100, well, there's actually over 200. We stopped at 165. So it's 200 and something that are calculated, but they only went. So we'll give you all of that and then every ranked area, what it qualifies as, what it was, and where we were at. Because there you have the accurate information.
And Trace, will you do me a favor while you're doing that? Will you just put our Derg next to it where our Derg was rated?
Sure.
Like, just because I think that's kind of apples to apples, right?
I'll just give you a...
Madison, Greenwich, New Canaan, all right, come on.
Well, that truly is the top 12%.
Yeah, we know that, but where are we in comparison to our Ders? Are we all kind of clustered? That makes more sense to me.
So just, again, this is why we don't have as much information. It says without, this is for U.S. News, without 2019, 2020, this is what they did send to me, which was just a clip from their site, assessment data available. U.S. News relied on historical assessment data from three prior ranking years while incorporating for first-time state science assessment data from 1819 to capture a broader measure of learning. Specifically, academic studies were used for 2016, '17 math assessment. And this is for this year, this is right news, in the 2017, '18, and 2018, '19.
So they're using data from...
16.
So that, that's what sent you. So what they're using to make this calculation...
Marcy, what grade did your son graduate?
My son was 12.
So six years ago, they're using the data from six years ago.
2000.
I think that's important to pull out too because, obviously.
Do we have a rating from that time period? So we say, you know, comparative analysis.
Yes, absolutely.
I guess it should be within a year, right?
It's just oral information, so it didn't happen.
It shouldn't be too far, well, in some areas.
It's too far. I think it'd be last year or two, the last...
I mean, they talk about graduation rates and college readiness again, you know, 90% for us is never happened.
Never, not in the 17 years I've been here.
So 50%, they said 50% of the ranking, because I kind of pressed that they didn't give me any information, and they said 50% of the ranking calculations use completely new data. So 50% use data that could be as old as six or seven years old.
So we'll get that right with that report.
Okay, so we'll get it. Perfect. Yeah, I think that'll be helpful and I think that will...
So you have accurate apples to apples.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It says 90%. What is, what's the real, like, rough estimate?
97?
Couple times for clusterizing.
Maybe we had 98. And they, what they do is they send us the cohort graduation rate and then Todd, Scott, and I all look at it. Special Ed as well looks at it. We talk about, okay, so what does this mean? There are nuances in the report that we don't necessarily philosophically agree with when it talks about graduation and specialized students and what it means to graduate, but I've never seen under 90%.
The state encourages us to keep kids in the 18 to 22 program for very good reasons, yet when they calculate graduation rate for those kids in four years, their account is a ding.
It's not even, doesn't count. It counts against us.
The state's aware of it. They've acknowledged, they've written that it's a data issue. So you have two parts of the state saying two different things. Get kids done and ready in four years, but keep kids who need to be in school until 22, until 22.
So we get penalized for the more students we support in 18 and 22.
Well, you know, we should always pull that out to support that piece of it because that's just wrong. Sorry.
So yeah, you know, and here, yeah, we could tell there are so many different nuances. I was trying to define the ones that I think are most misunderstood. How about?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Graduation rate does not mean the amount of students that walked for graduation. If a student fails a class the last semester, at the last minute...
Kids who are eligible to graduate, they have to fall based on when they start on the four years that they're...
It's four years.
So somebody doesn't pass their final and it makes them not pass science. If they do it over the summer, if they complete it over the summer...
That's a ding.
That's a ding. So it's when you graduate.
We always get 100% by the time the summer school kids, the one, two, or three that don't make it, we always, by the time the summer ends, they get to summer school, we're at 100%. We've never, I don't think in my time, have gone past the summer where we haven't hit 100%. We had a few kids come back that didn't finish. We had fifth-year kids come back. Fifth-year kids that finished topless. Right. That actually came back in their fifth year, enrolled, and were in the hallway with our kids.
I remember that.
So we don't, no child left behind, no North Grand River student left behind. They walk 100%. It may take them that extra summer though, and it's only a couple of days.
But that's against us when it comes to this.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't really care about that. I care about it.
But they need everything that they can try.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just the clarification's great. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And just to clarify, when you say penalized, you mean our graduation rate?
So that, yeah, so we get penalized in terms of the statistics that are reported out by the state board of education and that are used by these types of reports.
I'm going to pass this. Okay. Finance report, obviously.
Don't skip, did you skip over exhibit D?
That's what I'm doing. Yes, so I'll do both of them.
Do that in there, okay.
All right, so I'm going to actually marry the two of these right now under D. So you receive Ms. Wong's financial report. She's obviously not here this evening. I notified you by email. So she put a narrative together. I'm not going to read this word for word. The blue, okay. The blue part obviously is moving forward with our budget and our ability to save money in this year's budget to move towards next year's budget. As you know, we got a .92. We are dealing with obviously projecting natural gas costs and diesel costs right now with our buses, so we're challenged with that. But we're okay. There's nothing that's jumping out right now. Ms. Wong was very comfortable just putting this together, saying that there's nothing that we need to be concerned with right now. Now under exhibit D, you had charged me with looking at a comparative analysis of other county agencies. So if you go to exhibit D, we listed the 21, 22 budget, the 22, 23 requested budget, the approved budget in the following column for 22, 23. That converted to a percentile increase, and then I did capital at the end. So if you follow that across the Board of Ed, requested 33, 937, we got 32, 735, so we got a .92 increase. I'm not going to read those line for line, but if you go down, you can see the police received 6.82. The fire company actually went backwards, but made up in capital. Ambulance had a Christmas-like year. Are you all on exhibit D?
Yes.
Parking rec had 6.46 increase, public works 6.74. And in capital, you can see the lion's share went to public works and the rec department and fire had quite a bit of equipment that they needed to replace. So that was something that you asked for. I just wanted to put in a very simplistic chart for you. I worked with Anthony Esposito. He's the one that provided all this information. So it was from, it was from his office.
So Scott, I'm not looking at exhibit B. Well, now I am. However, when you look at the actual budget that you handed out, and I know it's addressed in Martha's front page, but it says that we're negative 601.
Yeah, that's for the 2% because she's sitting, she's going to hold on to the up to 2% encumbered. So at the end of the year, we're going to move a portion of that money...
To cover this.
To cover it forward.
Okay.
So we are, we're in good shape. We have over $6 million for the next two months. We're encumbering that money because you recall, we got .92. We requested $1.1 million, so we got $300,000. We're looking to capture the other $800,000 from our special ed reimbursement, from our 1% and 2% carryover from the last two years, and then anything that I can save this year for next year.
So you know what would be helpful? Like when she gives us this readout, which is great, I like it because it's really easy to read, but it leaves off the dollars for the 2%. So if you just handed out anyone this, it looks like we're at a deficit, not knowing we have another account. So anyone who's newer to the board or say someone who was looking at our finances, that's not, you know, well-versed in what's going on, it just looks like we're operating at a large deficit.
Did you read the second paragraph in the blue?
I did. But I'm just saying, like, if you're going to give a budget like in this format...
Right.
It should all be on one page because if I separate this page in any way, now this is floating out there and it looks like we're at a deficit. And you know what? I can see that totally happening, so we should just have all of our accounts.
If she was here...
I know she would. And I, just if you can make that recommendation when you're putting budgets together and we have multiple accounts, put the account, the other account on the same page or on the back of it so that you can clearly see that we're covered.
Right. She did, she did say it.
She did explain it, but...
But it separates, right.
It separates. It's not mentioned in the actual budget detail or expenditures, right? So when you look at the budget, it's just saying it in a narrative. So the narrative typically explains the whole budget package, so it should be, it should be outlined clearly, just so there's no confusion. But yeah, she did, in notable objects, she writes it.
Yeah, she did. In that second paragraph, explained, we are not in a negative position.
Right.
And if she's watching tonight, I'm sure she's correcting it right now.
I'm sure she will. I hope she's relaxing because it's not, you know, urgent, but I just think for, for the point of, you know...
Clarity.
Yeah, just for clarity.
And obviously, in June, prior to us closing out the year, that's when we'll talk specifically about our June 30 date, where we stand, where we are with that encumbered amount, and what will be going back to the town as unspent funding.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question for you. Hold on. This building.
What building?
This building, right here, okay? This is what? This is Wallingford Electric. Do we pay the entire, does Park and Rec pay their share and we pay our share? How does, how does that work for like heat, for oil and electricity and whatnot in a shared building?
It's funny you should ask that question because I'm still doing Martha's budget report. So, but that being said, I'm waiting. It will come out. So we were doing an analysis of the building that we're currently in right now, and with the cost of heating, fuel, and electricity, I asked our staff out front to break down as best she could the possible month-by-month purchase orders for this past year. So if you look at what I just gave to you for East River Energy, our heating oil, through April, we were at $65,238. We pay the entire amount for this building and we occupy half of it, okay? On the backside, if you flip it, the electrical cost is $32,000 or $3,200 a month for the entire building and we're paying all of that. So that's always been, it's really not an agreement. It's just been the way it has been. They're not separated. The only way that we could do it would be to present them with a shared cost for the entire building. Now, that's probably a conversation we'll have moving forward as we build our new budget and we talk with the town because we know we took down the Auger House. They want a lease agreement with us, and I did receive that today from Hurch and Moses, their attorney. I'm going to send that agreement to our attorney to look at because there's some, there's some interesting points in that that I want to have a legal eye look at. But when we talk about the cost of the Auger House and we've, we're already into that for $55,000, we're heating, we're cooling it, we've replaced windows, lighting, that's going to be an expense. This building alone, obviously, I just gave you $100,000 of expenses for a year coupled with the Auger House. For the two of those projects, I'm at three teachers.
I was just saying, you're on that to teach.
So it's an important conversation that we have when we start talking about apples to apples with shared responsibility with the town. And that's why I gave it to you.
So I'm just, just so that I can understand. So if, just to see if we're apples to apples or not, like if we have public works do something at one of our buildings, do they bill us and we pay them?
It depends what the project is. It really, it depends. We help that.
So it's not a steadfast...
We work very well, we work very well together with, with, with public works.
No, I was just trying to figure it out.
Right. If it's a major expenditure, if we're doing the paving or we're, you know, we would pay...
That comes out of our budget?
Yeah.
Okay. But we're paying all costs at the Auger House, correct?
Well, correct.
Electric, heating, all of that is town property, right?
Everything. And we're paying everything here, and we occupy 50% of the building. We're out here at four. This is in operation till 10 at night and then throughout the summer as well. So we don't have our school programs here in the summer, so those three classrooms at the end, the order isolated and shut down for those three months. So we just, I want you to be aware of it.
Yeah.
This is real, this is a significant amount of money.
Scott, when our attorney wants that lease agreement, will you share the rest of it with the board so that we can...
I will, I will give you the lease agreement. Absolutely.
With the attorney's comments on it?
Yep, absolutely. I just received it today.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
Because then it'll give us a better understanding of our path forward.
Sure. Okay. Post-high school plans, we've already done the NEAS, I'm going to move right beyond that. I did this two different ways. I apologize for handing everything out. There are obviously no names attached to this, there's no rankings to any, so you will not know who the students are. There's no information that you would be able to...
Well, we know two.
Well, so much more.
We know two and we know Providence. Okay, and we're very pleased.
The two with flowers.
The two with flowers, we know.
And then I'm going to send the second sheet for the entire class, actually. Is there an extra one that just went around?
There is, yes.
All right, so I'm going to grab that because... Thank you. I'm sorry, is there one from there? Oh, perfect. Mary, I didn't really make it to that. So similar to in the past, and I'll give you the real quick breakdown summary for this class of 20 to 81% of our students continue their education, 81%.
How large is this class graduating?
It's 100 and, what do we? 106? Total class, it's got to be larger than that.
Yes.
It's like 125, I would say.
So 81%, 103% will continue their education after. Of those, 73% are going to four-year colleges. 27% are planning to attend two-year colleges or vocational. 14 students are working, plan on working full-time, and 10 students are undecided right now at this point. So if you look at the breakdown of percentiles for 22 that were accepted, this is just going unaccepted to most competitive, highly competitive, very competitive, competitive, less competitive. You can see the breakdown. 127?
127.
127 total. 127 total students. If you flip to the back page, you'll see where the students were accepted. That does not mean they are going there. But this is where, these are colleges that our students were accepted at. So most competitive, the Bucknell's, the Nescac, the Con College, Fordham, Rehig, I don't know where, and they break it down. The second sheet, I, this is the first time we've done this. I've had them cluster to give you an idea of where our kids are going and the numbers that are going. And I think it's interesting. There's 17 students going to Gateway. I think it's truly indicative of our economy, where we're at for students looking to potentially live at home, earn two years of college credits and transfer in and really find out what they want to do. So it's really, in my opinion, an indication of kids making good choices versus going off and spending an exorbitant amount of money and not knowing what they want to do.
Right.
Because many of these students will transfer into a four-year accredited school if they so choose to, and all these credits will transfer.
And they're free.
They're free. So we've seen a lot of our students taking their graduate free.
Which is great, Gateway, right? And community college.
How? How is it free?
The state college that, two, three years ago, any state.
2020 was the first class.
Community college, now state university. Community college, there's 12 in Connecticut, in Gateway, in Middlesex, just listed. They go tuition-free, no loans attached to.
It's almost like they maintain their third grade and play average. They have to be full-time. They have to go directly from high school to there. They can't go somewhere else and then go down to that. There's quite, there's a few little stipulations, but they do not have to pay anything. And they now have all those agreements with UNH and other places where if they maintain and be average, they automatically get into some of these other schools.
Oh, nice.
So.
Gateway has a program though. They have a program that, I don't know how many kids would be involved in that, but for the railroad, for Metro North.
Right.
They have fire. They have fire classes, you graduate with fire.
They're nursing, the nursing program to get in, to start your prereqs free, and then go to a school to, if you wanted to get a bachelor's in nursing. It's a great way. So just, this is, you know, we had 11 get accepted to UConn, which is fat. UConn is really difficult to get into. We're excited. We had 11 get into Clinicaq, you know? So kids are staying in-state, staying local. Six going to University of Haven. So I just thought it would be interesting for you to have, just to look at. And nine are undecided, and guess what? That's okay.
Do you have numbers on like undecided versus who might have chosen a degree right off the bat?
This is.
Is that, I don't know if they have.
Undecided because they have decided to go to college.
Yeah.
Well, undecided major.
A lot of horrendous.
We don't have.
No, no, what they want to study, I don't know.
Yeah, I was curious. It's like, there's programs that we're aligning that directly to.
Right. I mean, we could actually add on a tab in the future for, you know, what you plan to study.
I'm just saying.
Because these two, no, they know exactly. Brayden wants to do child psychology, and McKenna is studying engineering at WPI. So I mean, they have a good idea of what they want to do. So we could add a tab for, you know, what you plan on studying to help. Yeah, that would be.
That's why I like going to the National Honor Society induction because it always says what they're.
Yeah, what they want to do.
Yeah, what they're planning on. I'm like.
Yeah.
I enjoy hearing it.
Any questions on the senior class? All right. COVID-19 update. I'm still very active with the Thursday morning Zoom meetings with our townwide response team. Obviously, numbers are up right now in the state, in the community, everywhere. And I think we're doing a really nice job of sticking with our plan and mitigating and identifying. And I sent you an email today that we had a classroom in one of our buildings that we shut down through Sunday. The students will be back. And then we provided everyone with test kits, multiple test kits. And our school nurse, you know, put a memo out for if there's any questions to please contact. So we're in good shape. All the windows are open. We're getting kids out. We're hoping in the next two weeks, we're going to see this really start to decline with the warm weather coming and our ability to, you know, get over this last blip. Any questions on COVID?
No.
I updated you on the town manager pending request. So I'm going to skip over that. The renovation project, I'm just going to speak to two pieces, and then I'll turn it over to Zach and Beth. But the progress is amazing. There are multiple workers onsite now. It really has progressed at a rapid rate. It's fascinating. The students are absolutely engaged. We had our, the engineers with Gilbane do that class with students that they said they were going to do. And I believe I sent photographs that were sent to me. I will make sure if I didn't, I will get those to you. But how many students participated in that?
A combination of MBIS students and MHS students. McGowan was in. So we had 120, but they're going to continue that next year as well. And every time they met, they went over. So the last one about material design, they talked about the importance of lighting. They showed different examples of projects. And then they take these students on the job site, and they go into the meeting. So it was a really rich opportunity for them. And many of them indicated their closeout surveys that they're absolutely interested in engineering. They want to pursue that.
Oh, nice.
Even those below. So it's great. Our civil engineering class is good to go off the job site and go into the school and get some information on air philosophy. We're taking a really full advantage of it. Q and A, but they've been really responsible with us.
Right.
So that program has been really, really successful.
And they get to wear hard hats.
That's the best part.
Yeah. Now, so that was great. They said they were going to do this when they interviewed.
Yeah.
And they did what they said they were going to do, and it had a great impact on 20 students who wouldn't have had that opportunity right in front of them. Their building that they'll inherit. And the next part, I've been involved with a number of conversations with QA and M, Gilbane, and two members of the permanent project committee with a gearbox and conversation that I know Monday night will be discussed. And as of this afternoon, it was really positive. And to give you a real short version, because I know they're going to talk about it, and I don't want to say anything that's incorrect, that they were waiting on a couple of parts for this switch box, which is critical to the electrical system at the high school that could have potentially put the opening on hold. If we were going to wait for these parts, we would have had a delayed opening. But it looks like they've come up with actually two or three different plans that they're going to address on Monday night specifically with the engineer, with QA and M, and with Gilbane. And so kudos to all those involved working to move this forward so that we are close to our open target date in January. And what people don't understand is that if we don't get those doors open, if that went into the summer or beyond, we can't start the demolition. And that sets that whole second phase back because we don't have the capacity to do anything with our students because we took 13 classrooms out. That part of that building has to come down for the tech, the gymnasium, and all of that to start on time. So it's that domino effect. And the permanent project committee's been really on it. So kudos to that committee.
Yeah, and special thanks to Victor Pediandrea, who is an electrician by trade and has been really spearheading good portions of the building committee and is very much pushing the needle forward, making sure that it is built correctly and that the student's safety is of utmost importance while still making sure we meet our deadlines. So I just want to give a special thanks to them.
And John Florio with Victor have been a team onsite. And it's been very helpful to communicate with them.
Got a good crew.
I hope I didn't steal your thunder.
No, not that I did. I mean, that's, yeah, those guys, everybody that does, you know, it's Monday through Friday. I like to go to the Monday meetings. They got work and stuff. Those guys are.
They all have jobs.
They have, they have jobs too. You know, so they're doing their thing all day, every day. You know, it's very commendable. You know, it's kind of goes like a, I won't say thankless because we just did it, but in a way, it's the amount of hours spent. It goes.
Yeah.
And it's very, I will say it's personal for them because they have children, and you know, John works for us. Mr. Pediandrea has children. They're doing this.
It's a labor of love.
It is a labor of love. And that's what makes it, I think, we're going to get to our target because the committee's going to make it happen. So, all right. If there's nothing else on the renovation, we do have a motion.
I have a question about the motion before we even get to the discussion part, just so we can move it quickly. Did, was there input from the art teacher, the guidance department, and the nurse about these changes?
Yes, that's why there are changes.
That's why there are changes?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure they have a voice.
There wouldn't be unless there was something. Now, I can speak to the nurses one. There was a window that was put in for a sightline from an office out for safety. So these things have been with input from our, from our staff.
Yep, and I know the art room was cabinet removal for some photography thing, right?
Right.
And I don't know what the guidance thing was, but as long as the guidance department is happy with it, then I'm happy with it. Okay. All right.
So what's the process here? We make the motion, we go on, says we're good. And it goes to the permanent project committee for further assessment? Or do we redirect?
They're asking us to.
They're asking, yeah, they're asking.
They brought it to us.
Yeah. They want us to give us our.
We have to give the blessing.
We give the blessing, and then they ask, they go to the engineer? Or has this already been pre-planned?
No, this is pre-planned. This is awareness of the board. So they're saying, does your board know that? And they said, we'll have them make the motion.
This is the last step.
Good.
Do you want to make the motion?
What's that?
You want to make a motion around the committee?
Let's see. I'm making a motion to approve the modifications to the North Bramford High School art room. No work, guidance department, nurses' office, as submitted under exhibits F, G, H.
Seven. Any discussion further? All in favor?
Thank you. Thank the committee. The retiree reception will be at the June board meeting prior to. We've done that in the past, and the retirees really enjoy it. We'll have light snacks, and their families will be invited, and we'll have a chance just to honor them for their service to the district. So that'll take place prior to the June board meeting.
The June board meeting to get out the graduation, correct?
Yes. And we're going to have perfect weather for the graduation because if we cancel.
When is eighth grade? Is it the 13th?
14th.
14th.
They're before us. So if we have.
14th, 15th, and 16th?
If we have, I'm not going to say it. We're going to have perfect weather that night, and then we're going to have a great board meeting the next night on a sunny night.
Okay.
Because we don't want inclement weather for the building project. We have no park. And we have no.
Okay, we have no wiggling.
Okay.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Umbrellas.
We have no umbrellas. Okay, all right.
That's it for my report.
There are no committee reports. Why don't we do visitors and press? Because when we move to executive, everyone can go if they want to. Visitors and press, anyone? Okay. Go to the board. Go ahead.
I attended the first. My therapeutic community at school track me today, and they did exceptional. I really enjoyed that. And I also want to grab here, kudos to PTO that supported them with plus transportation because it's their first year. They're not a sanctioned team. And hopefully next year, we can support them as a second town.
That sounds fantastic, Beth.
60, 60 students.
60 students, right?
It's awesome. And they walk over to the high school, and they work out on the track.
Six, zero.
Six, zero. 60, which is going to be a great feeder for our high school program. So it's, and their kids love it. And it's such a unique mix of different students from different grades and different interests. And they're all out there cheering for each other. It's beautiful, so.
Great.
Thank you, Beth, for sharing that.
I have two things.